Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. I'm Carlton Williams, Commissioner of the Streets Department. Joining me today is Richard Montanaz, Deputy Commissioner for Transportation of the Streets Department, and Keith Warren, Deputy Commissioner of Sanitation and Commissioner Room and Deputy Commissioner for Administration. I am pleased to provide testimony on Streets Fiscal Year 2018 Operating Budget. The Streets Department is excited to advance our ambitious agenda this upcoming fiscal year as we move forward with multiple strategic initiatives and successfully manage recent significant challenges. To achieve our objectives, we are requesting a general fund appropriation of $137,107,424 and an all appropriation funding of $213.9 million for fiscal year 2018. I would like to take a moment to briefly summarize the basis for this request. Under the leadership of Deputy Commissioner Keith Warren, our largest division sanitation is taking a key leadership role in the city's Zero Waste Initiative with the goal of diverting all waste from conventional landfills and incinerators. This objective will be achieved through close coordination with the Zero Waste and Litter Cabinet and a systematic assessment of alternative methods and waste processing technologies that promise long-term operational, economic, and environmental sustainability. As this initiative progresses, streets will continue to provide the exemplary curbside trash and collection services residents have come to expect. This past year alone, streets collected 241,832 tons of curbside trash for the two quarters of this fiscal year and has maintained the city's curbside recycling rate and recycling tonnage at significantly high levels despite considerable challenges in the composition of the recycling stream. We have also reached a milestone, completing our 10th Annual Philly Spring Cleanup earlier this April and continuing the trend of reconceting levels of community and volunteer participation each year. Sanitation's Philadelphia More Beautiful Committee is expanding its outreach through partnerships with community and business organizations, and we are looking to continue to increase the number of convenience centers to facilitate resident disposal of materials. Our Transportation Division continues to embark on two critical important strategic initiatives: Vision Zero and significantly expanded roadway and resurfacing to 131 miles annually. Deputy Commissioner Montanaz is directing the efforts, taking a strategic approach to the city's overall safe and complete streets transportation network, including significant infrastructure improvements and multimodal and comprehensive focus on traffic safety. Through closer collaboration and oversight by the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems, we are aligning our transportation activities towards Vision Zero objectives, including multimodal-focused transportation public works programs, more strategic right-of-way management approaches, continued integration of traffic signals to our centralized traffic operations center, increased LED street lighting, and significantly improved street conditions. In addition, our plans to expand roadway surfacing to 131 annual miles will not only enhance the condition of the quality of our streets, but will also avoid much more costly full-scale reconstruction, which will become necessary if we do not achieve a state of good repair over the next several years. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of our streets employees as well as our partner city departments, including Parks and Recreation, Water, CLIP, and Fleet Management on successfully providing snow and ice removal services this winter season, particularly the most significant winter event during mid-March, which a total of six inches fell, and extremely icy conditions as a result of falling temperatures. The Streets Department and its employees continue to rigorously pursue our mission of clean, green, and safe streets despite significant challenges in recent years, including an aging transportation infrastructure and vehicle fleet and a volatile recycling market. We have done a remarkable job fulfilling our mission and now poised to achieve success on the multiple priority objective outlined in this testimony. The budget proposed here allows the Streets Department to begin to address these strategic priorities while also continuing to provide our core services. We therefore request your favorable consideration of this budget request, and we thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. The deputy staff and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good afternoon. A couple of questions, then I gotta run out right quick for a meeting. You stated in your five-year plan, page 281, that the total weight of trash collection is decreasing. Can you tell me what's going on there?
Yes. A couple of things. In terms of global economic issues, we're seeing a reduced amount of tonnage that we're collecting curbside. A number of things. We call it the evolving ton, where recycling materials that we're collecting is actually also decreasing simultaneously. Manufacturers and industry is using less, much more smarter packaging and material to generate, and therefore, as a result, we're seeing less waste that we're collecting at the curbside. Although our percentages remain the same, we're seeing less tonnage both in recycling and rubbish collection services, so we're happy to see that as well.
What do you mean by that when you say your percentages remain the same?
Yeah, so if tonnage reduces for trash and recycling reduces at the same time, the percentage of the reduction remains the same, so we have a diversion rate currently of about 20%, even though both trash-
So the 20% reflects the recycling material?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Correct. Yeah, so we're still saying-
Everything's going down, recycling?
Yes.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
And you think it has to do with packaging?
Well, a lot of it has to do with lightweight material packaging that we're actually collecting curbside as well. We like to take credit for some of the initiatives that we've initiated. We've also started multifamily recycling initiatives that requires landlords to participate in increased recycling. We've seen a market in that area which landlords don't recycle as much as residential houses do because there's no ownership, so we've began to address those issues by reaching out, doing education and outreach to increase those numbers as well.
All right. Let me ask you this question. This may not, to some degree, may have something to do with your department. You're used to in early conversations about condominium trash collection. What level are you guys involved in those conversations about if and how we could potentially address that?
Yes. Over the last couple of years, I think condominium trash collection has been an issue in terms of what we collect and what we offer residential collections. We've viewed this as we offer the service condominiums, our individual property owners, and we provide this, we offer, I don't say provide, we offer the same service that we collect. We offer residence, which is once-a-week trash collection. As you know, Council President, that is not feasible for many of our larger condominium locations, especially in Center City where they have over 300 units, and therefore, they require a private collection service to be able to satisfy their collection needs. And so I think that's where we've been at issue.
So what's the status?
I don't know what the current-
And resolving, so are we? I know I shouldn't have brought this question up, but-
The current status from our department is if we are able to provide the service of once a week, we sign them on to the program, and we've collected about 70 locations, Keith? Yeah, 70 locations that we can provide that once-a-week collection service.
But any other conversations relating to the issue, particularly the larger, would have to deal with, what, some sort of credit?
Right.
Or-
No, I haven't been privy to those conversations.
It's not in your shop, right?
Not right now.
All right. That's good for you. It's a very challenging decision that has to be made, or maybe not has to be made at some point in time.
Yes, sir.
All right. Another one, illegal dumping is real problematic in a lot of sections, and the question remains, what are we gonna do about it? And is there a reasonable approach? We actually, when we had the police officers, the Police Department in here, there were some conversations about that. Obviously, you can't have a cop going around and, you know, trying to find people. We did pass, or I think we just introduced, I don't know if we passed that bill yet, requiring on refuse as a result of development, where there had to be disposal plan. We actually, I think we held the bill to make a couple of changes, because I know that this is a problem for you all. You are, I guess, on the larger lots, to some degree, you're responsible, your department versus LNI, am I correct?
Yes, well, we work with LNI and CLIP on those issues, but illegal dumping usually falls under our jurisdiction, yes.
All right. Who imposes the lien?
If there was a lien that was imposed, it would be licenses inspection, because our department doesn't have the authority to impose liens.
You don't do liens?
Right, that's LNI.
So how is that lien imposed?
It's usually imposed through a notice of violation where the property owner is giving the violation notice to either move and comply within a certain period of time, and if not, it's then taken to court. The court then imposes a fine and could be significant. If the fine is not paid over a period of time, a lien is then placed on the property owner.
All right, but the lien itself in terms of, because you all, if you all remove the debris, there's a cost associated with that for workforce and equipment and all that, and I guess dumping.
Right. CLIP also enforces notices of violation, so when they dump on a lot, for example, CLIP will issue an NOV, have the material removed, and the cost of remediation is then assessed to the property owner. The property owner, again, is not paid or complied, they're taken to court, and then a lien is then placed on the property for the amount of what it's imposed.
All right, but the only one that can impose a lien is LNI.
Yes, and CLIP is kind of affiliated through LNI.
I'm just trying to find out how it gets reported to the cost of the lien, because I think, you know, it's unfortunate that the property owners get these because they're not really responsible, and the large agree to the short dumping, but somebody has to pay the fee.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
The Commissioner tried to clarify NOVs versus Streets Department gives out CVNs.
Right.
So NOVs have a little more, they're weighted a little more, and they have a lot more, I think, authority, you know, to, well, they're the only thing that they can actually be lien when it comes to violation notices. So the department will send it over to, when it go to court, the Law Department will actually put the, you know, ask for the lien to be put on, but it'll be on behalf of LNI as an issuance and failed for compliance with the NOV. So, and I think it all starts with the issuance of a notice of violation, an NOV, and then the process moves towards, you know, the actual liens. I mean, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, Councilman.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out who gets the bill. Yeah, so we reclaim, because a lot of these properties are over in the, as I referenced earlier, in the Temple University area. When these properties get sold and they're snatching them up, and at the closing, do we get our revenue, our cost of the violation notices or the removal of the debris, do we get that revenue reimbursed at the closing?
Understood, yes, Council-
Because we did NTI in the early phases, we didn't attach liens on demos and some of the clearances of lots.
Absolutely. The Councilman is right, that is, the Law Department actually is the entity that's responsible for actually taking them to court and collecting liens. The initial process is either through CLIP or LNI.
Right, okay. All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
First, just want to mention my office, and me in particular, because it was in my area, have had some interaction with your right-of-way unit because of developers sometimes illegally blocking sidewalks, that kind of thing, and I just want to give props to Pat O'Donnell and that unit, who have been very helpful. I don't know if Pat's around, but tell him that I said nice things about him, just in case, okay?
He's a University City student.
I will, I will forward that to you.
Because he has been very helpful in that, because we've had a lot of construction in the area, and sometimes the construction folks don't do what they're supposed to do as far as keeping sidewalk clean, whatever. The other issue I just wanted to bring up, it's something I brought up at, excuse me, at other hearings, is the issue of resurfacing, particularly the timeframe sometimes that it seems to take. I've seen, where it seems to me, at least, and to other people, an inordinate amount of time for the whole job to be completed. I know you have to mill, then they cut around the sewer, the manholes, right, and then they resurface them. I basically described that, right?
Yes, pretty much, yeah.
And I noticed, we did some research in some other cities, like for Boston, they said the whole process takes about three days. Chicago claims, claims, okay, takes one to two weeks. I know it's, I know in my area, there's been times where it's been well over a month before the whole thing's completed, and particularly when it's milled, you know, cars drive over it, the little pebbles pop up, and people are complaining their cars get chipped and all that good stuff. So has that been looked at? Is there any possible way to, like, for example, when a proper, when a street is milled, why can't the, whoever is next to do the, around the manholes, like, come in right away? It's like, sometimes it just sits there for a while, a week or two, and then after the manhole is cut around, it's maybe some few weeks before the surfacing is done. At least, that's what I've seen.
Yes. Thank you for your comment, Councilman. We certainly are working to improve that process, and I'll let Deputy Commissioner Montanaz talk briefly about what we're doing and what steps we're taking to try to improve it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Richard Montanaz, Deputy Commissioner for Streets Department. Yeah, what we're doing is, previously, we depended on the utilities to actually do the manhole adjustments. So we had to wait for them. We're currently negotiating with them so they can then be part of one major contract. As soon as the contractor finishes milling, the same contractor now will be responsible for manhole adjustments. And so therefore, all the on- sense will be on that single contractor to turn that streets back to the Streets Department for us to resurface it. Our goal is to try to get it done within 10 days.
10 days? All right, that sounds good. Okay, all right. And that's ongoing, like, for this season? Is it reasonable to think that could work out?
For this season, we currently got, we have Water Department, we have PICO, and we got Bill currently under contract with us. We're currently working with PGW to jump in the same contract.
So you're saying, once the street is milled, and I know weather comes into this and all, but once the street is milled, you see it be totally resurfaced in around 10 days?
Within 10 days is our goal, is-
Okay, all right. That sounds good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
I have a couple of quick questions for you. Ballpark, how many miles of streets currently are overdue to be paved?
Overdue to be paved? Currently, we're on course to pave about 75 miles this year at the end of this fiscal year, and I'll let, again, Deputy Commissioner Montanaz clarify where we are in terms of overdue.
Let me ask you another question before we answer that, though. I was told there's 2,500 miles of streets in the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, thank you, Councilman. Richard Montanaz, Deputy Commissioner. I would like to get back to you on how many streets actually are in poor condition. We do keep a record for hours. Like the Commissioner said, our goal is to try to get 131 miles done per year, but I will have to get back to you to give you that answer.
Okay, if you could get back to, back to us, that'd be great. And I heard a rumor, just so you know, where I'm coming from, that 1,100 miles of streets need to be paved, and it concerns me because it's like 41, 42% of our streets need to be repaved. So that's why I want to know what the exact number is. And the other question I have is, a previous Streets Commissioner stated that we should be paving 130 miles a year to maintain our streets in good repair. I realize we have limited resources. Do you agree with that 130 number?
Yes, that's our target and our request for the, over the next seven years of using capital money to reach that goal. We believe that's the number and the target that we need to be at for to maintain the streets in a state of good repair.
And have we ever done an analysis, I don't know how you, what your measurement number is, is per mile maybe, of what it costs us in labor, fringe benefits, overhead, equipment, everything, what it costs per mile to pave versus what it would cost us per mile to contract out?
Councilman, a couple of years ago, there was analysis done to determine whether or not it's cheaper to actually outsource or perform in-house paving, and we were very competitive, in fact, slightly cheaper than many contractors when it came down to that. Obviously, those are outdated numbers, and certainly we would like the opportunity to look at real-time numbers, but certainly back then, we were very competitive, and I think this was about two or three years ago. Deputy Commissioner Montanaz has those numbers, and I'm sure that he'll be happy to share them with you at this time.
So, two years ago, when we compared, we were $14.35 per yard for city work versus $14.46 per yard for the contractor work.
And did it take into account the fringe benefits of the city that have climbed now to 87%?
So, when we did the analysis a couple of years ago, we did take into account overhead fringe benefits cap and everything into our cost.
Could I ask you to do a quick back-of-the-envelope analysis today, just to see where we are, just to determine whether, what's the best option for us?
Sure, we'd be happy to update our numbers.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, how's the implementation? I know Mayor Kenny had an executive order on, I guess it was Vision Zero. How's that impacted your operations, and are there any challenges that you see from that executive order?
One of the things that we were very happy to receive was the additional funding and resources for paving, which is supportive of Vision Zero and many of our transportation multimodal initiatives, so that we were able to get additional crew to be able to try to reach that goal, which is largely a part of our Vision Zero initiative. There are others that we're working on as well. There's a plan that is expected to be released, and certainly, we're looking forward to working with Otis to help implement those plans in our partners. But resources is what's key, and we were able, happy to be able to get additional resources to help in that way.
And are we also living up, I know the mayor committed to install 30 miles of new bike lanes. Are we living up to that commitment?
So, when it comes to bike lanes, we try to take advantage of every opportunity, including resurface whenever we can. As you know, we've reached the low-hanging fruits. We went out and got them. Currently, the city has over 400 miles of bike lanes. We're looking to improve our network and connect the network, so whenever we're resurfacing, we do take a look whether we can take advantages and install additional bike lanes.
Okay. Last question, simple one. I'm told Henry Avenue and Lincoln Drive are slated for a complete rebuild at some point. And my overall question is that PennDOT studied cars operating over the speed limits on those and other roads, and they found on Henry Avenue, 50% travel 5 to 14 miles over 35 miles per hour. Kelly Drives 55% over 15 to 24 miles, and Lincoln Drives similar numbers. Are there any devices that we can install to inform people, like, you know, sometimes you go on a road, you say, you know, it's flashing, you're at 70 miles an hour, you should be at 45 miles an hour?
So, yes, Councilman. As you know, the city of Philadelphia piloted with PennDOT some of those feedback signs currently on Roosevelt Boulevard. We do have a Lincoln Drive project, capital investment project out there, which we are going to try to improve the asphalt, put high-friction asphalt in, also put other traffic calming measures such as signage, blind striping, feedback signs wherever possible. We are partnering up with PennDOT on Henry Avenue to do similar treatments there. Henry Avenue is actually being bid out and managed by PennDOT. It's two projects, one's north of Wisahicken Creek, the other one's south of Wisahicken Creek. And for Kelly Drive, we did implement the first speed-on-red signals, so if you're speeding 10 miles above the speed limit, it actually triggers red lights for you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
What was that, if you're coming down Kelly Drive at what? What was that you just said?
So when you come down Kelly Drive of Fountain, if you're going 10 miles above the speed limit, the lights actually trigger red.
Oh, I did not know. Not that it would apply to me, but just, you know, for others who are listening and watching. Oh, good to know, very good to know. I had a couple of questions. No-truck parking. And first of all, I want to thank you all for being here today. No-truck parking has been an issue in not just the 8th District, but I know in many other districts, there have been a number of no-truck parking ordinances that have been introduced. I know Councilwoman Squilla, and also, I think, Councilwoman Parker, and numerous other district council members have introduced a significant number of no-truck parking ordinances in the last six months, year, whatever, and there does not appear to be a strategic approach by the Streets Department in terms of how do we address this issue. When I was watching the news, I think it was either last weekend or maybe even the weekend before, and there was an accident on a Saturday night on Roosevelt Boulevard with a truck that was parked on the Boulevard. It was parked "legally," quote-unquote, air quotes, legally, but it probably, in my estimation, was not a good place for that tractor-trailer to be. You know, two people were killed in that accident, and the driver, again, was parked legally. He was, you know, at a local hotel, I guess, as an overnight, but that's not a truck stop. Roosevelt Boulevard isn't a truck stop. You know, Ogans Avenue, Lower Ogans, near Lindley Avenue in my district, is not a truck stop, but it looks like a truck stop. If you went there right now, you would see six to eight tractor-trailers parked at that location at this very moment, I can pretty much guarantee it. We've worked with the Police Department, we've had some signs, you know, put up that say no-truck parking on certain hours, but it seems as if they just ignore it. And so my question is, how are we going to strategically approach what is becoming more and more of an issue?
Yeah. I'll make a comment, then turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Montanaz. Certainly, what happened on the Boulevard was a tragedy of magnanimous proportions that we certainly feel for the families that lost their lives. I'll talk, let Deputy Commissioner Montanaz talk briefly about our plans and where we are in terms of truck enforcement and truck parking signs.
So, good afternoon, Councilwoman. Rich Montanaz, Deputy Commissioner. So we are currently working with Otis and DVRPC. There's actually a truck task force that's created.
Oh.
As you may or may not know, a lot of the problems happen when New Jersey, especially South Jersey, closed all their parking lots to trucks.
No, I did not know that. So what happened?
So, a lot of truckers used to park their trucks, their rigs over in New Jersey and then come back to Philadelphia. That's how they would travel. All those, all those parking lots, if you want to call them, have currently been closed in Southern Jersey, so therefore, it's creating a problem in the city. One of the things we're looking at, and we're leading a study, and that's why we got the trucking industry in it, is how do we address this issue and how do we direct them? What we found out is, most of these truckers get paid a certain stipend to park their trucks overnight in certain areas, so if they don't use that stipend, that's just money that they're keeping in their pocket.
Oh, I see.
So, we are, we, once we have our preliminary study done, we do want to come through council and discuss our preliminary story and see what the next action should be.
So they essentially get a, you know, funding to be able to compensate them to park their truck somewhere legally?
That is what the trucking industry is telling us.
And so if they park it on the street, they can pocket that extra couple dollars?
Some of them get somewhere between $100 to $150 per day.
Okay, all right, and so they can hold on to that $100 to $150 if they don't pay to park?
Correct.
So, okay, all right. So how are we attempting to remedy that here in the city with the Truck Task Force?
So we're looking to see where, with the help of PIDC, Philadelphia Regional Port Authority and all that, we can create areas for truckers to park. We have a large port, we realize that truckers are going to be here. Our revenues depend on our ports, so therefore, how do we best assist that part of the city?
Okay. Okay, all right. So we're actively working on it. When do we think we'll see some remedy? When will we have some relief in our neighborhoods that we won't have all of these-
We should have preliminary findings in six months, and then we will, we're welcome to come and talk to all of yous.
Okay, so within the next six months, before the year is over, we'll hear back from you? Okay, very good. Another question regarding streets and the coordination of utility services. So when we have a street being dug up, you know, there's, you know, water that needs to be addressed, there's electricity, you know, electrical lines, there's, you know, all sorts of stuff underground. How do we coordinate between agencies to make sure that that's, everything is happening while the street is open? Because one of the things that I've constantly come across is that we'll go in and we'll fix one thing, and then someone else will come along a month or two later and do something different, you know, and then there's a third, you know, so first, maybe we just may, you know, repave the street, and then we may go open it up because, oh, well, we forgot we needed to do, you know, the, PICO needed to do something with the electrical lines underground, and then we come back again because maybe PGW wants to address some issues underground with the piping. So how do we coordinate that, and how can we better coordinate those issues?
So, so the Streets Department has bimonthly meetings with all the utilities where we discuss our capital investment projects, including what the Streets Department's resurfacing, so we would try to coordinate the utilities as best as we can. If Water Department's coming in next year into an area, but PGW's not coming in for two years later, we try to coordinate their capital projects so that everybody's in there at the same time. We do one rebuild of the street at the single time and try not to do multiple. Unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't quite work, and there are emergencies, so that's where it comes in, but most of the time, we try to coordinate everything. We do realize this is a drain on our resources.
So if it's an emergency, and just by the, you know, by the word "emergency," you understand that, you know, coordination is not really possible, so if there's an emergency, that's where you will see that the coordination doesn't exist?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, but otherwise, there is a system in place?
Otherwise, we try to coordinate all our capital investment projects, including we give them a look ahead of what the city, what the Streets Department is trying to accomplish by resurfacing in the next three years.
Okay, all right, very good.
Councilwoman, if I could add also, we use a technology called Jeepus to be able to kind of highlight what projects are upcoming so that there's a computerized system that allows us to show when paving schedule is going to take place, when a PGW or a PICO project is expected to take place, so that we can coordinate that so the street is not repaved and then followed up and dug up and opened up for other services. So again, as Deputy Commissioner Montanez said earlier, unless it's an emergency, the system helps us coordinate those activities among multiple agencies so that the street can be finished at one time.
Very good, very good. And I keep, okay. Speed bumps, constantly, constantly. You know, we drive way too fast in the city of Philadelphia. You know, it's a motor raceway. How do we get more speed bumps, more traffic calming? We introduced a bill that was passed in this council, I think it was in 2014, which added about three, maybe roughly say three and a half million dollars to street calming efforts. Speed bumps, you know, pedestrian safety, sidewalks, that kind of thing. Can you give us some idea of where we are with the constant request for speed bumps? And the fact that we probably won't be able to fulfill all of those requests, but how do we give people a measure of safety in their, on their block in their neighborhood where people are just driving through like they're on the expressway, like they're on, you know, the Boulevard or someplace, on a resident, small residential one-way street? How do we address that?
Yeah. Speed cushions have been an effective tool to reduce and slow down traffic. In fact, over the last month or so, we were in the process of installing 50 new locations throughout the city of Philadelphia in areas where there's high pedestrian traffic and we've had issues where there were concerns. We've worked with many of the council members' offices to identify where those areas are located. And so we want to continue to work with Vision Zero and Otis to make sure that we're putting them in locations where they're needed immediately as a priority and then continue, again, as a part of the longer, larger term plan for transportation, to make sure that that's a part of our process. Deputy Commissioner Montanez also is working closely on it as well, and he can tell you where our long-term plans are in terms of speed cushions.
So, so our current plan is, we've been deploying what we call removable speed cushions. They're actually recycled rubber. So our plan, our goal is to deploy as many of these as we can. Like the commissioner said, we have 50 locations we're trying to get to within this year. Purchase more and then continue the program that way. Then eventually, once the community gets used to them, change them to regular asphalt speed cushions, something that will last us longer. The rubber speed cushions are set to last about five years out there on the street before we will have to recycle them again.
Okay, all right, very good, very good. Because again, well, it's good to know that you're putting in, you said about 50?
About 50 locations this year.
This year, okay. Do you have a list of where those locations will be, of what those locations are?
Yes, we can provide that.
Can you provide that to the chair?
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Thank you, Chair. Or Councilwoman, we'll get right back to you.
Okay, I'll come back.
Commissioner, just to follow up with the Councilwoman started to talk about, want a few things here. But one, you should tell everybody, you know, your budget coming in here today is $138 million, but your overall budget with state and city and other grants are in excess of $200 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
I said, we're doing a lot of things.
Yes.
All right, and I know you're responsive as much as we possibly, you can, all right, with the resources we do have, but there's a lot going on. And I have a lot going on with, you know, with I-95. I just happen to be, you know, one of the district with I-95 and have been working with your, with your chief engineer and, you know, they're doing an incredible job with the amount of, I think, the magnitude of the projects that are going on. I mean, thankfully so. And I mean, it's been unattended to for many, many years. So I appreciate that and being responsive. To the Councilwoman's question regarding street paving and coordination with other departments, it seems, you know, I've had a few issues, but it seems like the Streets Department coordinates with other utilities in the city, right? So who, again, because I missed with the answer to the Councilwoman, like who coordinates the interdepartmental coordination? Is it the Streets Department?
Yes, that falls under the leadership of Deputy Commissioner Montanez and his team.
Okay, so Deputy Commissioner, you coordinate with, and that doesn't include PGW?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's great. So we have each other, we're, you know, coordinating with the departments with each other, Water Department, you know, PGW, Streets Department, and any other emergency type of, you know, situation. How about PennDOT? Okay, so PennDOT, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, PennDOT doesn't coordinate with us when they're going, they're scheduled. We coordinate with them, but they never coordinate with us. So I've had two incidences in my district where you're doing your job, deputy, thank you for that, all right, but PennDOT never told us that they were going to come back in and undo what we just paved. So I'm sure this isn't the first time you're hearing that, but is that a consistent issue and concern for you or have we rectified that?
Is this anything related to the I-95 reconstruction?
It is in and around, all right, but there was one that was totally nowhere near, all right. I mean, I had Frankfurt Avenue, that wasn't near Frank, I mean, 95. You know, Frankfurt Avenue, you know, Streets Department did its work. I think you coordinate with other utilities, PGW, they were doing some work, and then PennDOT, I don't know what they were doing, but they tore it back up.
Frankfurt Avenue was actually resurfaced, it's a state highway, so it was resurfaced by PennDOT. A month after PennDOT finished, PGW went, came in and said that they had an emergency repair, which was several blocks long. PGW was then forced to mill and resurface the entire road curve to curve, per PennDOT rules and regulations. So we do try to event, try to coordinate as best as possible. We don't get PennDOT's repaving list until the beginning of the year. So we just recently received PennDOT's repaving list for this year. And we try to coordinate that with the utilities as well.
And I kind of, I mean, you're in a tough position with PennDOT because they fund a lot of, a lot of our roads that go through our city and are, you know, considered highways. But I hope they recognize, all right, the position that they put you in, you know, with the citizens here and especially taxpayer money. I mean, we're just resurfaced it, it's a lot, it's a lot of money.
Yes.
All right, so, so that's what I wanted to add on that. Staffing, you have, you were, you're going to be staffing up, in which department, part of the Streets Department, are you trying to fill and are you having any issues with staffing up to our, you know, our full staffing levels?
Well, in both divisions, we staff up seasonally to accommodate the issues, the service increases that we get during the spring, especially with sanitation. We staff up because tonnage usually increases in April, May, and June when everyone's outside cutting grass and ultimately doing spring cleaning and we start to see an uptick in the amount of tonnage that comes up. And so we staff up accordingly. That is contingent upon us ability to have equipment so they can be on the street, meeting our service level agreement. Same thing with potholes. We don't fill during the winter months due to temperature conditions. However, months when the spring breaks, we see an increase after the winter season, after holes are discovered and ultimately acted on, we staff up in those areas as well.
A few years ago, I'm going to move to vehicles. A few years ago, we were leasing 35 vehicles. How many are we leasing?
Right now, we are currently not leasing any. We are now...
And we had a large purchase?
Yes, we're working, thankfully, we were able to get used capital funds to start a replacement schedule that we hope to get our fleet back on course within the next several years. This year, last year alone, we purchased 35 new compactors, which helped out in terms of our on-time collection rate. We're still not where we want to be yet, but we're working closely towards it with...
35 is a big investment, but a necessary investment because we were leasing 35.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, you know, when you lease and you're trying to catch up on all that, then, you know, you have your overtime. I mean, so it's all kind of connected?
Yes.
Connected together?
Absolutely.
So are they local? Where are we getting our vehicles? Are they local?
I would ask Deputy Commissioner Warren to comment on where we get the vehicles. We work closely with fleet management.
Yeah, final assembly is done locally, but the trucks are made in several different parts. So the hoppers come from one place and the chassis comes from somewhere else. And the snow fighting equipment comes from a different place, which is local.
Okay, well, I'll catch you offline on that so I can better understand our local purchasing and supplier network. Are the vehicles or trucks, are they different sizes or are they the same size, are they smaller size, are they, do they have the same type of, I mean, tonnage can they hold or is it more compact?
Yeah, we do a variety of vehicles because of the city's very dense population and diverse neighborhoods. The, I guess, the common vehicle that we use is a 20-yard high-density compactor that can hold anywhere from 13 tons in two runs and two loads. That's our average load that we collect with crews on each day. We also use small trucks, which is 12 yarders, which holds smaller tonnage, around six or seven tons. That's so that we can get down small streets, especially in areas like South Philadelphia and North Philadelphia. So we do have a variety of truck sizes. The smaller trucks are more challenging to purchase because at present, only one manufacturer makes them, so therefore, they're at a rare commodity and we try to plan in advance to get as many of them to add to our fleet as possible because it's challenging to be able to get them in a timely manner.
No doubt. You noted that the length of repairs, years of repairs for the vehicles through staffing? I mean, I know we have temporary staffing, you know, for the obvious reasons, necessary, don't get me wrong. Is there a goal to try to, you know, cut down to eight years to four years for repairing of some of these vehicles or is that going to happen, you know, just through attrition of, you know, putting the older vehicles and purchasing new ones?
Yeah, our goal is to try to put our fleet on a seven-year replacement schedule. Currently, the age of our infrastructure is about 10 years, and so it's going to take us a couple of years for us to get to the point where the entire fleet is on that seven-year replacement schedule. This ultimately helps fleet reduce maintenance costs and helps keeps vehicles on the street instead of in the shop. And so we're hoping to work towards that with the increase in capital funding to allow us to continue purchasing those vehicles. We also have an initiative, Councilman, that I want to highlight. We're working with both finance and the Philadelphia Gas Works to use CMAC funds, which is congestion and mitigation air quality funds, to use CNG trucks next year. There's a station that is in the process of being built at Venango and We Chief at the PGW location, and the Streets Department will get 25 new CNG vehicles, so that's going to expedite our replacement schedule.
So is that 20, well, that's good to hear, all right? So, I mean, you're actually, you know, one, you're being a lot more sensitive to the environment and, and two, you'll get more mileage out of it. Three, you're creating jobs because it's going to be a CNG station, you know, that's going to be used more frequent than new, I think, new business with PGW. And I think they, you know, they've been talking about that for a while. Is that 25 new vehicles in addition to the 35?
That's 25 new vehicles in addition to the 35, that's correct.
Now, that's great. So you will be getting the replacement down to seven, you know, in your plan, so, so good job. Last, LED lighting, conservation on our energy. What, I mean, are streetlights now, are they all replaced with LEDs and on our traffic signals or are we, you know, systematically trying to, you know, get to a certain, I guess, a certain level of replacement for energy conservation?
I'm turning this over to Deputy Commissioner Montanez. He can give you an update where we are with LED lighting.
So all our traffic signals are currently LED. We did that with a DOE grant several years ago. We're currently now working on changing all our streetlights LEDs, there are over 105,000 in the system, and we're moving very slowly on that. We're doing several thousand per year.
Are they just switching out the lamps and the heads or are they going to be, I mean, is LED the way to go as opposed to solar?
Well, LED and solar are two, LED is actually the light source, whether you go solar or not. Streets Department partner up with School Creek River Development Corporation at the School Creek Trail, and there are solar lights that are there on the boardwalk, but they're also, although the sun powers the batteries, the light source is still an LED. So LED lighting is the way we're going to go.
So that's, that's all, that was, maybe I should have stated as a question. Have you ever, have you thought of switching from LED or, you know, was there a decision made going to LED solely and/or any consideration for the solar, solar lighting? But you answered it for going to LED. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. We have been waiting since '01, and you all are going to tell us soon when we can get permits to the Dillucy Blackwell Community Center, right?
Yes, indeed, Councilwoman. We are certainly working diligently and making sure that we get those permits for that project. Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm starting to get old. Thank you. Number two, I went to my office and got a call from a reporter who said they're, who's coming to this hearing, who said they're doing a, an article on crime in the city, and they had decided that they were going to do me the honor of picking my district around 57th and Walnut. They said statistics show that we have a lot of crime. Will you look into that? They're going to try to see me later and ask me about it. And I didn't know, I told them honestly, I didn't know that 57th and Walnut was a big crime place. I just assumed it was like any other area. It's a good neighborhood, a great one, Cobb's Creek, and we love it. So would you look into that?
Yes, in terms of what the Streets Department is assisting within those areas?
Yes.
Okay, I will certainly do that, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for all that you do and, you know, I'm glad we, no matter where you are, we'll find you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate it.
And we look forward to you and your department. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Bass, and then it will be Councilman O., and then we got a recess for a break. We have a stenographer and others that need to take a short break and then we can go on to the library. So the Council, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take that as a hurry up.
Yes.
Okay, so let me hurry up. So a couple of quick questions for you. We introduced a resolution recently calling for a hearing on, that the Streets Department undertake a hearing around traffic safety, particularly around schools, universities, and daycares for planning purposes, because to my understanding now, there's nothing that really exists. So if I want to put a new charter school or new public school, you know, any school anywhere, daycare center or anything, whether it's on a commercial corridor or whether it's on a very busy street or whether it's on a very sleepy street, there is no traffic study that is currently in place. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that something that the Streets Department will feel would be a priority and something important that we could do in terms of recognizing that there are, you know, maybe better areas for placement for such facilities?
Yeah, I mean, usually the Streets Department is brought in after the schools open up, especially charter schools.
Right.
And then all the parents say that the, all the problems fall on the Streets Department because school flashes are not placed, signage is not placed, but usually we don't know the school opens up till after, usually nine months after they've been open.
We have a school, perfect example in my district, I won't name which one it is, but it's a charter school, a beautiful school, you know, doing a great job. But one of the problems is that they're on a very busy street. You cannot cross directly from the sidewalk where the street, where the school is located, you cannot cross directly to the where the street, where the school is located. You cannot cross directly to the other side of the street because the traffic flow is so heavy and so fast. And so you have to walk probably about twenty yards to the nearest corner to be able to cross. And so getting, you know, those little feet to walk that extra, you know, they see it as extra steps to get to where they're going to is problematic. And that's something that probably could have been addressed from the very beginning if we had, you know, something in place that would have required it. So bringing a new school was a great idea, but not looking at the traffic patterns and making it an afterthought is problematic, very much problematic. So we look forward to working with you all to address that.
Yes. Councilwoman, also, if I can add, I wanted to ask if Otis Representative could talk about, there's a Transportation Action Plan
Oh, okay.
that is currently being developed to take those things into consideration along with Vision Zero. So I think those two will be certainly helpful as we look towards providing more safer transportation systems, especially around schools and areas where we have a high-risk vulnerability for people to have accidents and crashes. But if, okay. But I'll make sure that we kind of update you and brief you on the plans for that Transportation Action Plan and also what Otis is working on as well.
That would be great. I would love to get more information on that, and that would fit neatly into the hearing that we're going to be having, excuse me, into the hearing that we're going to be having around traffic safety around our schools, daycares, and universities, so that we can give some more thought before we just, you know, plop something down without giving forethought to what the traffic impact will be. Also, I did want to mention, and Commissioner, I want to thank you for your help with our Eighth District Sanitation Task Force, which we announced back in December. And, you know, I know that the administration came out with a similar task force shortly thereafter, so I feel like we're working in sync and, you know, we're all on the same page, recognizing that trash and sanitation is a huge problem. But one of the things that I think we have to recognize is that it's not a problem necessarily in every part of the district, in every part of the city. In some areas, as an example, in my district, in Chestnut Hill, trash and litter, it's picked up, and if it wasn't picked up, it would be an issue. But I don't have dumping in Chestnut Hill unless you tell me otherwise, you know. And parts of Mount Airy, you know, I don't have dumping. But then there are other very wide swaths of real estate where there's a lot of dumping, and it's continuous. And one of the things that I just recently found out, and I found out when we met with our Eighth District Sanitation Task Force, is that dumping, in some cases, is a function of not having adequate trash storage. And so you always think, okay, well, you know, my trash can fills up. I'll, you know, put it in a bag and take it out into the yard or to, you know, wherever I store my trash at until trash day. But for some folks, they don't have the luxury of storage space for trash. And so then it becomes, this trash can is full, and I have to get rid of this trash, and where am I going to take it to? And how do I just get it out of my house? And so I'd like for you to talk a little bit about that and what we're doing to address this huge dumping problem that we have in the city of Philadelphia.
Yes. Councilwoman, thank you for your comments. First, you're correct. In certain areas of the city, it's more prevalent than others, and especially in lower Germantown. We did enjoy and learned a lot from the Eighth District Task Force meeting that we attended. One of the things that I think Deputy Commissioner Warren will speak to is our ability to try to provide alternative services within our budget, current budget, to be able to assist people to get rid of items, especially larger bulky items.
Yes.
Things that they don't want to keep and don't have the space to store in their households, especially. We're seeing a widespread problem with people dumping on our rec centers, in our park area locations on non-trash days.
Yes.
And this is a major problem that we want to try to assist with through education and outreach and also additional services. Deputy Commissioner Warren can talk to you a little bit about what we're doing as a result of that task force meeting to assist residents in your neighborhood and not only in your district citywide. So I'll let him talk briefly about it as well.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
Good afternoon.
Deputy Commissioner Keith Warren, Sanitation Division. As a result of the meeting with your task force, which is closely mirrored after the administration's waste and litter program, we did take into consideration some of the recommendations made, and we have instituted a program to extend our drop-off hours.
Oh, great.
Make them open early and stay later past the normal business hours so that people have more accessibility to get rid of the things in the house over the summer months as a pilot program. If it works well, we plan to continue it. And also, as a result of that meeting, we have implemented the revolving drop-off center, for lack of a better term, through the summer months, where we'll be going to known problem dumping spots in your district and all six sanitation districts over the summer, one Saturday a month. We'll be advertising that very hard, so people can bring their trash out to those spots where dumping normally occurs to hopefully curtail some of the dumping.
Can we get two-day-a-week pickup? Is that possible?
He caught me off-guard on that one. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have the capabilities to offer that, Councilwoman. Certainly, that's a staffing and resource issue.
I know.
And we're trying to get our single-day weekly up to par.
Okay. Well, we look forward to working with you with our task force and trying to figure out how we can be proactively supportive of the Streets Department so that we can help you do what it is that you do.
Thank you.
You know, because I think that the trash problem is, you know, it's a real problem.
Yes, absolutely.
And we lose people. I think that we should put more money into the Streets Department. I'm trying to raise your budget there. But I think we do lose people because we have a reputation of being a dirty city.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, no one wants to live around dirt and filth.
Agree with you. Hundred percent.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. If I can, you know, before I call the remaining members that have questions, please keep time in consideration for a line of questioning. And we can also recess and come back for a second round or a third or a fourth round if we need be. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
I'll try to make as quick as I can. So what I want to know is, you know, as transportation within the city becomes more diversified and complicated, same old streets, yet, you know, we've just talked about CNG vehicles, and there's a CNG location. Some people like CNG. You know, we're doing the fleet. Pico's installing their own EV charging stations only for their EV fleet. Are we working with them? Then we're trying to do EV throughout the city. We've got bicycle lanes, scooters, all that. And at the same time, as we have all this going on, we have, as far as I know, and I'm asking you, we have a shortage of available parking spaces in certain sections of our city, like Center City, certain parts of South Philly, and other locations. In part, I understand because of our high parking tax. And so they're building hotels that have no parking with them, and theoretically, they'll take an Uber or they'll use public transportation. I just don't know that that is the case. Do we have a kind of an overview, understanding of how we're going to deal with our streets and letting people know where to go to fuel, charge, whatever they do with whatever vehicle they choose to have, repair, all these complexities?
Councilman, I'll make a general statement and then let Deputy Commissioner Montanaz talk to you specifically.
You don't have to go too specific.
Okay.
I'm getting pressure to just speed along from the front and the back.
Again, I think a Transportation Action Plan that Otis is working to address will highlight what's best for the city, and a coordinated and strategic approach. So I'm certainly looking forward to working with that and certainly hope that we will work together on the initiation of that plan. Deputy Commissioner Montanaz, if you want to comment on specifically the multiple-use vehicles, real quickly, we can move on from that.
Yeah, I mean, along with the Transportation Action Plan, we're also working on the smart city roadmap, so that should give a lot of people an idea of what we're planning to do. Unfortunately, the Streets Department does not control the building codes, so we can't assist there. We only control the streets, and there's only limited parking on the streets.
Okay. If you could provide the Chair at some point in time, I'm very kind of curious and concerned about parking structures, facilities, because we're building hotels and large office buildings, and they don't build any parking with it. We are removing or parking garages are coming down. They're not being replaced. I'm not sure what's the capacity for this realistically. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, too, I knew there was a parking study done in Center City. Let me just add that. And there was a study shown from the number of parking spots available, and even with the reduction of some of the parking lots, what the vacancy rates were in these parking, that I guess we could somehow get a copy of that. That was done, Rich, I'm sorry, do you know when that was?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission did that, right?
Yes.
And that was done two years ago, or is it?
Yes.
Yes. So maybe we get a copy of that, too, to see that. But first of all, thank you guys for being here. And I think the Streets Department is one of the best departments in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilman.
That we probably irritate on and on and on. I mean, I send personal emails to you guys. And Keith, thank you for your readiness and willingness to respond to our sanitation efforts and understanding that when people see trash or something's not right, the response and the quick action is much appreciated because they appreciate us knowing that we care about that issue. And so it's so important. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner, the same goes with you, to be able to have access to the Streets Department and knowing that they will respond and even just get an answer. Sometimes it's just an answer. It's not an actual response. Whether it's the answer that we want to hear or the community wants to hear, it's still an answer, and I think that's important.
Thank you, sir.
Rich, this question's going to be for you. We, as we grow through the city and as we look into smart cities, how we're going to use our streets, not only for parking, which is always an issue, and we'll be talking about that until we're dead and after we're dead, but as far as using the streets with different modes of transportation, pedestrian use, looking at speed cushions and/or raised crosswalks, do we, are we going to work with planning on a map of what we believe would be the best areas? Now, all this costs money, and I understand that. But are we looking at a, doing a total plan of the city, or maybe build now from Center City, south and north, how that would work, and then possibly what that type of infrastructure cost would be?
Yes, we are. That's actually headed by the Managing Director's Office, specifically Otis. We are doing a transportation master plan for the city to see what this would look like and what it would cost.
Is there a timeline when do we know that?
Oh.
Councilman Mike Zikagney, Chief of Staff, Otis. I think a big piece of this is going to be tied up in the action plan that we're just starting to get going, but also in the Vision Zero action plan that we're also having moving forward. That's already on the website. We're looking for comments back on that. We've reached out. I know people have met with all the council staff on that plan. So I think a lot of this, from the integration of what we're going to look like in the future, is really something that we're looking at. And as to the action plan, I don't know the exact timeline on that, but that's really something that we're going to have to really reassess is how this works. Now, a lot of things are going to be driven is also by the data, especially when you're talking about the speed cushions and about some of the safety. And we're currently coming up with a process in order to look at the data and really assess injuries, serious injuries, deaths, and really try to come up with almost a scoring system so that we know where the focus, the limited resources that we're going to have to have the greatest impact. Thank you. I think that makes sense. And I think having a plan in place gives the residents of the city an idea of how we will eventually move forward. Again, have the resources. We see what happens when we don't have limited, when we have limited resources to redo our streets and repaving. We get complaints all the time as why are our streets done and why are their streets done? And even, you know, whether we have the capacity, and maybe this is a question, if there are additional resources given to the city to redo streets, do we have the capacity to grow the number of streets being done? I'll pass that off to Deputy Commissioner Montanaz, but I know the Streets Department has, within its next plan, over the few years of its budget cycle, to build those resources. And there's been a commitment from the administration to dedicate those resources so that we're able to resurface more streets as we go out into the years. Do you want to say anything else?
And yes, I mean, our goal is to get to seventy miles this year and hopefully grow that to one hundred and thirty-one miles in the next five to seven years.
That's great. That's great news. And I know Steve Lorenz will hate hearing this, but the other big question we have, historic streets in our district. It seems like there's limited resources to do some of these streets. A lot of these streets haven't been done in thirty, forty, fifty longer years. And I'm advocating for, I know you guys can't ask for more money in your budget, but I'm advocating for more money in your budget to look at these streets, to see, we've done a study, and there is a list of priorities, but since they cost so much money to do, is there any other way to look at grant funding or DVR PC, to look at streets, special needed streets, to get additional resources by than just the original way we do it now?
Yes. So as you know, the Streets Department is constantly looking out what kind of federal and state grants are out there, and that's what we leverage our capital funds with. That's what we, you know, most of our capital investment projects are about eighty percent funded from either the state or the feds. And those are the things we look at. We try to stretch the city dollar as much as possible.
Yeah, because I know we have applied for some grants for some of these streets. We didn't get the grants, unfortunately, so those streets are pushed back for, you know, a later time. But, you know, I think the best part was to put a priority list together. Not that everybody agrees with the priority list, but we have a list now of the streets that need to be done and what list, what order they would go in to get repaired. And obviously, if something happens in the middle or construction, they can be moved around. But knowing that we still don't have the resources to do them over a period of time, we're constantly chasing our tail. And if we could work with the administration and the state and federal government to really understand our needs, and I know we have some unfunded mandates still for the handicap ramps that we need to do, but we need to be able to look at our streets, to people say that, you know, who wants to drive up and down the city that it's a constant full of potholes or bumps? And you guys do a great job, and I'm glad to hear we're increasing the number of miles. One last question, and then I'll pass. I know you want me to go, Bob, but the, as far as sanitation, are we, are we looking to increase the number of new trucks?
Good afternoon, Councilman. Just we can, we have been granted a replacement line item to replace our fleet. Unfortunately, our fleet is about three or four years older than the normal replacement cycle we'd like to get to. But with our current plan, over the next six or seven years, we should get to that seven-year replacement rate that we're looking for to make us viable.
Because I know sometimes with our equipment being old, and I know we cut the budget years in the past, and so we weren't renewing equipment as well as we should have been. But as our equipment's getting older, the machines break down as much, they can't hold as much, they have to be emptied more, and it costs more in labor and overtime and things like that. So really, we're spending more money trying to do the same work than we would be if we bought new equipment.
Right. So currently, with fleet, the replacement plan now going forward is about thirty-five new trucks a year, and add to that an additional twenty-five trucks that we're receiving from CMAC for the CNG trucks. Again, I think we have a pretty solid plan now. In about six or seven years, that we should be right where we need to be to
That would be great. Hopefully, I'm still here when it's all done, and we can have all new trucks out there. But again, I do appreciate all the work that the Streets Department does. You guys are very responsive, a great group, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that.
You are last.
People are trying to get out of here, so I'll skip my first twelve questions and move to questions twenty-six through one oh four. Commissioner, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Councilman.
I had a chance to listen to testimony upstairs and review testimony. I have a quick question. I see the information provided regarding zero waste. Composting is a concept that has been discussed. I've been engaged in some conversations with that concept. There's been There's been composting attempts made in neighboring states that was not done the best way, could have been done. So I'm curious from the perspective of, from your perspective and considering that Mayor Kenny is promoting a zero-waste policy and goal, what impact or what thoughts you may have regarding composting?
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, composting is a big part of our plan to get to zero waste, and I frankly don't think that we can get to zero waste without a strong and robust composting program. Our recycling rate currently at 20%, which means 20% of all trash is diverted and put back into productive use. We think we're about to hit a ceiling, 30 to 35% according to the EPA is max recycling. That means there's a considerable amount of other material in the waste stream that we have to take a look at. And food waste and leaf and yard waste, which make up composting, is a big part of that. And so right now, what we're doing is conducting a feasibility study to determine where areas that we can take those materials out of the waste stream. The biggest challenge that we have in facing that is not only collections, but a processing facility that's in close area where we can actually take the material to be generated. Delaware used to have a processing facility and a digester. Unfortunately, they were not able to maintain it because they could not create a market for it. We're hoping to do that here in the city of Philadelphia with our solid waste contracts coming up, and that feasibility study is going to tell us what opportunities exist.
When does that solid waste contract come up?
2019.
Right there. Yeah, because to me, one of the issues, the thing about composting that, you know, people are not aware of how much money we spend on our trash refuse, you know, tipping fees and landfills, and if we can reduce food waste and things that can be composted that will have an impact on the money we spend out of our general fund.
Absolutely.
Also, the fact that various departments in the city, like Water and others, use the product, the byproduct of compost, you know, for soil and those type of things throughout the city. So it's a, we have the raw material, it's just how do we find the best way of making it into a product that could be, you know, and you have a number of restaurants around the city, you have smaller companies like Bennett Compost and others who are doing that, but how, how can we prime the market to increase composting and also change behavior? And I know, you know, the Streets Department does a good job on a carbon-based composting in the fall with the leaf collection, but how can we continue that process going forward? The other point, you talked earlier about CNG. I know Council President has been focusing on CNG vehicles and he had some questions to Fleet Management, as the conversation's been going on, and I noticed a process of getting new vehicles, and we're working PGW for a CNG fueling station. Has there been any conversations at all with the State P3 Board? I know they have initiative that they announced, I believe, last summer, spring, around budget time last year, where they were looking at doing CNG fueling stations at 26 transportation authorities around the Commonwealth. They wanted SEPT to be involved, but SEPT decided to go through electric bus route. But hasn't there been any conversations with the State P3 Board through Secretary of Transportation Leslie Richards about how we can incorporate some of the initiatives they're doing here in the city of Philadelphia? Because once again, just like composting, it's, CNG is a chicken and egg perspective. People will buy more vehicles if there's fueling stations, but without the fueling stations, people don't buy the vehicles. And so it's another chicken and egg issue, so I'm curious about your thoughts.
Right. I have not had any conversations beyond the PGW. That's not to say none hasn't existed with Fleet Management, and I certainly can follow up. I know that there's talks about expanding another CNG location out southwest Philadelphia to give us even additional access, specifically with that company that you're speaking with and the agency you're speaking with. I haven't had direct conversation, but I will follow up.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I see you're talking, so.
(phone rings)
I see you were talking. I was going to continue with question number 26, but I hear the bell, so I will defer to later.
If you get a tacit nod from our stenographer, who, by the way, I want to say for the record, thank you so much for your patience.
I'll just say, for whom the bell tolls, and I'll be quick.
You're witty, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll be as brief as we possibly can. Let me just quickly give a shout out to Nick, who covers our district on east of Broad Street and Davert, who covers the district west of Broad Street, Commissioner. If they didn't do a good job and weren't responsive to our constituents, we would be jumping up and down about it if something was wrong. So we needed to say thank you because they've done an excellent job.
Thank you, Councilman.
With that being said, let me just start with the issue of commercial truck parking, not just in the Ninth Council District, and it may have already been mentioned, but I needed to know, does the city's Vision Zero plan take into account this challenge of the illegal parking of commercial vehicles such as tractor-trailers in residential areas, particularly overnight? And I ask this question because the origins of the problem seem to be multifaceted. First, truck drivers don't know where they can park and can't park overnight. I'm giving you the explanations that we've received when trying to communicate with them. Two, truck drivers want to park close to their homes after two or three months on the road, and there aren't any available parking lots close by where they live. And then third, the police oftentimes have bigger fish to fry. I want to take a district like the 14th that has like the largest span of area to cover in the city of Philadelphia. And so if they're dealing with the issue that has a higher rate of priority, are they going to come back and write a ticket on the tractor-trailer? So with that being said, the trucks, however, are causing some traffic and safety issues. I mean, for us, let's just think about Lime Kim Pike. They create blind spots, and you either can't make a right turn, you can't go down the street, and don't let me start talking about around the Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church that is already in and of itself, we hear a lot of parking challenges. What kind of assistance would Vision Zero help us to provide in addressing that issue?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Commissioner Montanez briefly discussed it earlier today. I'll let him give a summary of that discussion and the trucking parking plan that he discussed earlier today.
So, as I mentioned earlier, we are working with Otis, DVRPC, and the trucking industry to see how to attack this problem. We're hoping to have a draft plan within the next six months.
Six months.
So, and we will be coming to council to discuss the plan. The issue, as you mentioned, Councilwoman, is the location of parking lots, and all the private parking lots that used to be over in Southern Jersey have closed in the last couple of years, is what the trucking industry has been telling us. So we are working with the Port Authority, we want to work with PIDC, other agencies to see what benefits we can provide to this city residents and how to best assess this.
So, and I appreciate that response. We will, we just ask that you take into consideration that from our perspective, this could be a potential opportunity for the private sector. Like, we talk about enhancing the tax base, right? We want to grow the pie. What an economic opportunity for government to partner with the private sector along with the industry. I'd like, I envision a perfect P3 here, right, where it benefits residents, it benefits the truck drivers, you know, and our tax base because someone makes this their business to do. So whatever we can do to be helpful, I'm happy to hear you'll be coming before council. Please make sure you keep that abreast so that we can provide a response to our community so they know we're not twiddling our thumbs.
Absolutely.
On the issue. Next issue, and I'm going fast because I'm standing in between the stenographer getting her break. Rising Sun Avenue. We have a constituent, Dr. Lewis Brown, we've been working very, very closely with there. He's located near the intersection of Rising Sun and Levick Street. I know he's communicated with your department relative to his traffic concerns at this intersection. I just want you to know, we will be calling you to schedule a meeting with your office to talk about this issue and anything that streets, you know, and council can do to help to address it. It's challenging. We'll wait to get the data from you on the number of accidents at the intersections, where it can be streamlined, become more efficient, and what from a technical perspective, your inspectors say. But we do need to get that, and it's a major concern in that area, so I needed to get it on the record that we asked.
Yes, okay. We certainly look forward to that meeting as well, Commissioner.
Finally, I will, and other questions that we have will send to you in writing, but this issue of the repaving of the streets, I've, you know, communicated, as my colleagues and I have talked, communicated to the administration that when we've gone out, I think we're on our fifth budget briefing and town hall meeting. You know, I have these meetings every year in my district to give residents an overview of the city's budget. When you hear the sort of hurrah in the crowd, it's when you talk about the repaving of streets in the city of Philadelphia and that investment. However, nine times out of 10, after they get excited, the sigh goes away, and they say, well, that doesn't mean anything to us. How are we going to determine what streets get paved? What's priority? Is there a rating system? What response do I give to our constituents?
Well, I think that this year, we're happy to be able to say that our budget was increased to do more miles of paving. Last year, we did 55 miles, we're projected to come in at 75 miles this year, and it is our hope over the next six to seven years that we can get to 131 mile per year ratio, which will allow our streets to be maintained in a state of good repair. That is contingent upon us getting some additional resources in the next couple of years, but we're happy that they, that there was money put into the capital budget, over $170 million over the next seven years for us to do additional paving. So I think relief is on the way. In the meantime, we'll do our best to expedite and prioritize which streets need to be addressed first. Deputy Commissioner Montanez can talk a little bit briefly about how we do that prioritization.
So every winter during our construction slowdown, we tend, we send our inspectors through to rate every one of the city blocks, and we do have a rating. That's how we create our lists of what we're paving. We will be releasing our paving list this Friday for the citywide schedule, and council will have an advance notice of that prior to us being released, we'll release it today, Commissioner?
Yes, that's correct.
To council.
Okay. Listen, thank you for that. 5800 block of North Park Avenue, you heard us ask that question for the record. Again, I'll submit it to you, but this speeding around schools, you've heard about the crisis that we had at Edmonds, which is a community school in our area, but it's not just Edmonds. That was the tragedy that got reported on, but there are a number of sites across the city. And so we will submit these questions to you relative to the purchasing of flashing signs. In addition to that, speed bumps, and you've changed it, because before I heard bumps and humps and something else, but somebody must have said, we better change this because if Sherrell says that again, that's not going to sound real nice. So just tell us for the record, what are the different variations of these traffic calming mechanisms called in this, in the city and streets?
Speed cushions.
Cushions.
We're referring to them for those areas, and we have some that are currently being installed, 50, that are being installed across the city as we speak. Some of them are temporary, made out of recycled rubber that last two to three years, and which gives us the flexibility to actually come in and put a temporary solution until we can come up with a long-term asphalt version. That is also a part of Vision Zero and our transportation action plan to be able to consider those transportation issues that you discussed, especially around public safety. So we are certainly working with that, and we're looking forward towards working with council and implementing those plans.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, thank you and your team for your responsiveness. Always have to say it when the department is responsive, because again, if it was the other way, it's easy to get beat up when you're doing things wrong, but when you give a response, even when I don't like it, you make sure you get back to us and give a response, and that matters. So thank you and your team.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Counsel, Chair, Councilwoman Blackwell?
Before Councilwoman Blackwell, I just want to, you know, I'm sitting here through the hearings and over the last six years, and, you know, Streets Department really is on the front line of what city services are about. You have an excellent team, you know, from management, you know, through your engineering team and the engineering department when it comes to civil engineering and design. I mean, if you think about it, and just break it down as simple as possible, right, what do people want in the city of Philadelphia? They want their trash picked up, they want their streets plowed, they want the banded signs, which I hope is still a priority of the Streets Department. We want to get rid of those bladed, you know, signs that are all over our poles, and I think, you know, every member of this city council has complained about it. You know, we've introduced legislation. I know I have, the double defines of holding people accountable, not just on the end user, like who, or the advertising, right, but the people who are actually putting them up, because everybody's being exploited there, and it's just, you know, cluttering our neighborhood. So it's, it's all about, you represent the quality of life of the city of Philadelphia. You know, again, from the roads, the signs, to the blight, to the trash, to the litter, to the recycling, to, you know, you name it. You're on the front end of what people expect of the city of Philadelphia. So I want to thank you all for what you do every single day. And that's why, you know, I tried to do something cool and outside the box, and I have done several times. One of the times, I did Councilman undercover, and I went on a ride with your sanitation department, and, you know, that's where I learned what hazing really is about when it comes to the new hiree, so to speak, in your trucks and picking up trash. So they do a great job.
Thank you, sir.
And they don't get credit for it enough. So I want to thank all of you for what you do. Councilwoman Blackwell, you have any final questions? If not, I'm going to end.
No, thank you.
All right, thank you all. I want to especially thank our stenographer for her patience, and we will return in 40 minutes for the library. Thank you.
Thank you.